Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for February 8th, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll kick it off tonight with our announcements with J.C.
Thank you, Fran. February is Black History Month, and this year's national theme is African-Americans in the Arts. There are many events scheduled around the county and virtually to participate in learning and honoring African-Americans within the vast field of art as we celebrate Black History Month. White Marsh Township was required to have a credit analysis from Moody's Investors Service over the past month. Moody's credit opinion showed a stable AAA rating, which is the highest achievement available. Many thanks to the Finance Director, Kevin Barron, for his oversight of the township's finances. White Marsh Township Day is scheduled for Saturday, April 20th, from 12 noon to 5:00 p.m. at Victory Fields. Save the date and come out to enjoy all the fun and activities for the whole family. Anyone looking to participate or sponsor the event can find information on our website. And the township offices will be closed on Monday, February 19th, to observe President's Day. All yard waste will be picked up as regularly scheduled. Thank you.
All right, thanks, J.C. I will approve the minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from December 14th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from January 2nd, 2024?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have a couple board public discussion items. The first one will review SLD number 03-23, Conditional Final Minor Subdivision and Major Land Development, Mile One for Washington LLC, entitled BMW Automotive Dealership Expansion at 500-512 Pennsylvania Avenue, Fort Washington, PA. All right.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
John I. Newsy here for the applicant. The application before you tonight is very straightforward. Essentially, we are consulting five lots into one, five driveways into two, which we think is a tremendous benefit for traffic circulation. We're removing two BMW buildings to build one state-of-the-art BMW facility. BMW has been in this community for almost 50 years, and we're excited with this project. We'll be able to be here for many years to come. It's been an absolute pleasure working with your township solicitor, zoning officer, engineer. They made a good plan, even better. We're on receipt of all the review letters. All those issues are will comply, and be happy to answer any questions that you may have. That's the building that we are proposing to build. We also want to highlight, we've been working with the county. Through this project, we were able to work with the county to secure a part of the cross county trail, which will be great for the community as well, which will enter from the back to the side. So we're really excited about the project and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
That's great, and thank you for working with all our committees. Looks like a great, great project. Any board questions, comments?
Do you anticipate this creating any jobs?
Yeah, that's a good point. It's one of the things on my list I failed to mention, but yes, absolutely. You know, we've been here 50 years. It's a great community, and with expansions like this, I think it will.
Charlie, anything you want to add?
Yeah, I just want to mention that this was reviewed in November at the Planning Commission meeting, and the Planning Commission members did pass a motion recommending approval of the final plan. As you recall, this is the second stage. You had already approved the preliminary plan last August. So this is, and the final plan is completely consistent with the preliminary plan.
Thanks, Charlie.
Krista, no lingering issues?
No lingering issues.
And I know it was reviewed at Shade Tree as well.
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any other board comments, questions? Any public comment, questions? All right, hearing none, we'll go down to resolutions. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2024-04 relative to a conditional finer, final minor subdivision and major land development for SLD number 03-23 for the BMW Automotive Dealership to consolidate four lots into one, remove two existing buildings, along with an expansion of the main building at 500-512 Pennsylvania Avenue, Fort Washington, PA?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McInally, will you please call the roll? Yes, Ms. Tureen.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Ms. Moy.
Yes.
Ms. Toll.
Yes.
Chair McCusker. Yes. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night. All right, we'll move into the second public discussion item. Review SLD number 08-23, Conditional Preliminary Final Minor Subdivision for SLD number 08-23, Alliance HC Spring Mill Property LLC on North Lane West and Hector Street North existing parking lot. All right.
Let me just introduce this very briefly. This is a two-lot subdivision. No development is proposed as part of this. These are the upper two parking lots associated with what most of us still refer to as Spring Mill Corporate Center, which has a different name. It's now known as the Spring Mill Creative Campus, but I still go back to Lee Park, so I'm sorry. But it is that development. These are the upper two parking lots, and they're being split down the middle into two separate lots. And I will now turn, oh, one more thing. This was discussed at the Planning Commission in January at their meeting, and they passed two motions, one to recommend approval of the waivers that are requested, and one to recommend approval of the preliminary and final plan.
Thank you, Charlie.
Good evening. Bob Carolis and Cozen O'Connor. Thank you, Charlie, for that introduction, and we're happy to be here. I have with me Eric Carlson from Alliance, and in the virtual audience tonight, we have Ken Purdy from Purdy Architecture and Tom Colesse from Barry IZ, our engineer on the project. Charlie mentioned, we are here on just a subdivision approval, and it's very straightforward with a little bit of a twist. As this board might recall, back in 2015, 2016, the then Spring Mill Corporate Center was subdivided to create the current condition today with the upper lot and the lower lot, which has the building improvements on it. At the time, there was a note put on the final subdivision plan which called for an easement which burdened the upper lot to the benefit of the lower lot and required that if any parking was ever removed on the upper lot, it would need to be found on a one-for-one basis on the lower lot. Now, as far as we know, that easement was never recorded. However, the plan was recorded, and in accordance with Pennsylvania law, that's still a deed restriction against the property and enforceable by the township. So it's something we need to deal with, and we're here to talk to you about that tonight. Obviously, as this board is well aware, in over the last eight years, the office space world has changed. Your zoning has actually changed, and the world of the office has even changed more dramatically in the last four years. Alliance, since acquiring the property, has done a lot of great improvements to the building, including decommissioning former office space for tenant amenity space or common area. And we've been working with Charlie along the way as use has changed within the property to make sure we're in constant communication and agreement on the parking requirement for the site. So essentially, the transition of those spaces took some burden off of the parking demand on the site. And so essentially, what we have here is on the upper lot, we have 343 spaces. What we're proposing is to subdivide the upper lot into two lots. Lot one would be 163 spaces, and propose lot two would be 180 spaces. And as Charlie confirms in his review letter, the subdivision to create lot two with 180 spaces is sufficient to service any unmet needs for the lower lot. So what we're asking for in connection with the subdivision is to supersede that old plan note, essentially, release lot one from that burden to have to replace parking on the lower lot, but trace the requirement on lot two, since, you know, in connection with Charlie's agreement and our proposal, that we believe that the 180 spaces is sufficient to service any unmet demand from the parking requirements of the site. So you might be asking, well, why do that now, or what's the reason for that? Alliance is looking at a future redevelopment of the upper lot, and the prudent thing being that we would want to make sure, before we come back to you with any sort of future redevelopment for the lot and lay out the money, which is substantial in engineering, a plan, that we have this restriction removed from proposed lot one where we would propose the redevelopment ultimately. So, and as Charlie mentioned, the only other thing I was going to mention is we presented this to the Planning Commission last month, and we have a recommendation of approval for this. And we're happy to answer any questions you might have about the proposal.
Thank you. Do we have any board comments or questions? Any public comment, questions? All right. Hearing none, we'll go down to resolutions. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2024-05 relative to a conditional preliminary final minor subdivision for SLD number 08-23 at Alliance HC Spring Mill Property LLC located at North Lane West and Hector Street North, which currently serves as an existing parking lot?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McInally, will you please call the roll? Yes, Ms. Tureen.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Ms. Moy.
Yes.
Ms. Toll.
Yes.
Chair McCusker. Yes. Thank you. Good night. Take care.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2024-06 pertaining to the Harts Lane Sewer Area Minor Act 537 update revision as presented to the board?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McInally, tell you?
Yes, we have a representative from Carroll Engineering here to give us a brief update on the update of 537.
Good evening. I'm Bill Mallon with Carroll Engineering. As you know, we're the White Marsh Township Authority Engineer. We've worked on the Harts Lane project. It's a, what's called an Act 537, or a Planning Module Component Three, which is a municipal-initiated update for an area. So on the screen is a brief timeline. I'm not used to this sophisticated stuff with one of my clients, so I apologize if I'm not doing this correctly. Maybe I'm going the wrong way.
You might want to point it closer to me.
Excuse me?
You may want to point it this way because it's based on this computer. I don't know if that will help.
Okay.
Do you need to go backwards or forwards?
Back, please. Yes, here we go. It started really in 2013, but really ramped up in 2017 and 2020 when DEP identified this as a study area and then requested that the municipality look at the area. So the authority did that 2021. To date, we prepared the update, which has cycled through. It's been looked at, I think, by the township, then went to the reviewing agencies, Township Planning Commission, County Planning Commission, and Township Health Department. Now we circle back to where we're at, so if we could go up one?
Yeah, you might look on the side. It may be off.
Maybe right. Oh, here we go.
There we are.
Sorry. So this is the study area in the light green at the bottom is approximately 22 properties and the Mequon School. As you can see, they're all small lots there, and the issue would be that if any of the lots had an existing system failure, they're too small to get replacement systems on, and DEP wouldn't want to see a lot of small flow treatment plants being constructed on all those properties. So the intent is to run the sewer from the Mequon School north up Harts Lane, right at the bend there. There'll be a small pump station, then it will convey the flow up to the existing sewer up, and I think it's Harts Ridge Road, in the existing authority system. So as I indicated, we're going to have a pressure sewer system, grinder pumps, one on each property. Anticipated cost of the project, $650,000, 75% construction, 25% engineering permitting, you know, the administrative costs associated, 22 properties plus the Mequon School included. Other alternatives briefly, DEP asked us to look at a couple other ones, primarily connecting to the AIM Academy. They have a wastewater treatment plant down along, I guess it's River Road there on the Skook Hill River. We looked at that and not including any possible updates to that treatment plant. That project would cost about $1.4 million, so double the selected alternative. And then another option that was considered was putting in individual small flow treatment systems for each property. That was even more expensive. And then you have 22 individual little treatment plants discharging to eventually, there's a, I guess, a drainage ditch that runs through there and on down to the Skook Hill River. The authority will be pursuing grant funding for this project. There are a variety of programs. I also, on our grants team at Carroll Engineering, so we're plugged into trying to obtain grant funds for this. There's a variety of the small water sewer program, for instance, could yield $400,000 toward the construction cost, which is, you know, more than half of the construction cost. And there are others of the programs that are more lucrative as far as getting funds. Here's our timeline, as I mentioned, so we've actually got through all the planning agency review. We're here today, February 2024, for the adoption, expecting that everything will go as it should. This should be approved by DEP in 2024. We'll be looking for grants later this year to apply for, and then probably a year later, if we're successful, get a grant. And at that point in time, I think the authority will then determine, you know, how they're going to proceed with the project. But our anticipated schedule is getting our permits March of 2026. Construction permits advertised for bids, construction completed 2027. So it's still a several-year process to get to fruition on the project. And I think that's it, so any questions?
All right, thanks, Bill. Go get those grants.
Yes, we work hard for them.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. McInally, please call the roll. Yes, Ms. Tureen.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Ms. Moy.
Yes.
And Ms. Toll.
Yes.
And Ms. Chair McCusker. Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2024-07, naming Kevin S. Barron the delegate, Teresa Simonetti, first alternate voting delegate, and Craig T. McInally, second alternate voting delegate for the TCC Tax Collection Committee for White Marsh Township for 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McInally?
Yes, this is really administrative aspect of the night, the next couple, really just changing names for people that aren't here anymore, and appointing Kevin as the main delegate for the Tax Collection Committee. This is a committee that oversees the earned income taxes for the township, and Terry, the Assistant Finance Director, as the first alternate, and myself as the second alternate. So really just a housekeeping move here.
All right, thank you. Do we have any board comment? Public comment? All right, Mr. McInally, please call the roll. Mr. E.
Yes.
Mr. McCusker. And Mr. Manuel.
Uh, Mr. Manuel. Sorry.
Ms. Moy.
Yes.
Ms. Toll.
Yes.
Chair McCusker. Yes. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2024-08, naming Craig T. McInally as a designation of agent for FEMA Disaster Recovery Funds?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McInally?
Yes, again, housekeeping item. FEMA has called and said we have some outstanding money out there that we can collect. However, the former township manager is listed as the designation of agent for FEMA, so we're just changing the name to myself, so we can collect some of the money that's outstanding.
Will you get your name correct, you think?
I'll get my name correct, yes.
Making sure we got all the names right? Any board comment? Public comment? Mr. McInally, will you please call the roll correctly?
Ms. Tureen.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Ms. Moy. I'll turn.
Yes.
Please.
Ms. Toll.
Yes.
Chair McCusker. Yes. All right. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2024-09, considering the annual emergency operation plan promulgation for White Marsh Township dated February 2024 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Andrew, is this, you want to present anything on this, or Mr. McInally?
We just talked about that this is something that has to be approved every year. It's usually at the organization meeting with the change of several different people for the township. We tabled that until tonight. We updated all the names in here. There's no changes to the operations plan itself, just contact information and different leakers, so just some name changes, again, administrative stuff.
All right, thank you. Any board comment? Public comment? Mr. McInally, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Tureen.
Yes.
Mr. Vanego.
Yes.
Ms. Moy.
Yes.
Ms. Toll.
Yes.
Chair McCusker. Yes. All right. Moving on to motions. Do I have a motion to authorize the advertisement of an ordinance amended Chapter 51A of the Code of Ordinance to add new section 51A-4 titled Emergency Entry Box Ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McInally?
Yes, Andrew, do you want to talk about this, or this is just authorizing advertisement of a new lock box ordinance that Andrew presented to us?
All right.
So currently, we go by the International Fire Code during our fire inspections for asking businesses to supply a Knox box or lock box on their facility so emergency responders can get in in an emergency. This would just strengthen that International Fire Code with the township ordinance that shows that we're backing the code, and also it's a little bit more stringent. It tells businesses exactly where it has to be mounted, the exact height, so that way it's uniform throughout the township, and also specific keys that emergency providers will need in the event of a problem at their business or facility.
Sounds good. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authori--? Thanks, Andrew. Do I have a motion to authorize the waiver request for permit fees associated with the renovation for Colonial School District at Colonial Elementary School of $294,125, and to require an escrow account be established to pay all associated fees incurred by the township?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McInally?
Yes, this was a request by the Colonial School District, who, there were some renovations to the elementary school. The permit fees came to $294,125. There is an existing ordinance in place by the township that will allow the board to eliminate any permit fees. The recommendation would be to waive those fees by the board, however, establish an escrow account. The recommendation would be $75,000. When that level comes down to $10,000, it would be replenished, and that would pay for all the inspections, the plan reviews, the engineering, the legal, so at least the township is paid for their services that they're offering. That is a recommendation by myself to the board.
Thank you. Do we have any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the advertisement to bid the 2024 road program?
So moved.
Second.
Krista. Before you, as a request to advertise the bidding for 2024 road program, we're nearing completion of the plans, and the roads that are suggested for resurfacing are the entire Wainwright subdivision, which is Camburn Road, and all of their cul-de-sacs, and then Arlingham Road and Meadow Road, which were recently trenched by PICO to do some utility main work. So before you, as a request to advertise that bid.
Thanks, Krista. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the execution of two memorandum of understanding relative to the Public Works collective bargaining agreement to add a class of employee as skilled fleet mechanic and two to amend language under Section Two, power rave to healthcare insurance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McInally?
Yes, the Public Works contract was signed last year. In reviewing that document, we found that some of the language and verbal commitments that were stated to the Public Works workers for their contract was to pay for their full deductibles. However, the language of the contract stated a lesser amount than the full deductible. We're looking to just change that to basically do the right thing here and increase the payment for the deductible in the first memorandum. The second one would be to add a skilled mechanic. We have been searching for a mechanic for over a year, and the rate that they were looking at is an entry-level labor rate. We're looking to increase the starting rate for a skilled mechanic, and this would bring them up to a rate that would, we think, attract more people. So we're hoping the two memorandums of understandings would be accepted tonight, and then we could start looking for a new mechanic and to fix the Public Works employees' deductible amounts.
All right, thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve an Act 153 Open Space Grant to the White Marsh Foundation in the amount of $45,000 for the maintenance of the Dixon Meadow Preserve at Erdenheim Farm?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McInally?
Yes, this is just, I am told, an annual request from the White Marsh Foundation for the township to pay for 50% of the maintenance cost that has occurred down at the Dixon Meadow Preserve. This year, they're looking at $45,000, so the total maintenance would be $90,000. That's just to maintain the property. They're looking to extend some parking spaces down there and do some things with the trails, so improve the trails. So the request is for $45,000. They will, of course, be sending in invoices, and we would verify those numbers, but at this time, they're looking for up to $45,000 for the township's cost for the maintenance down at the Dixon Meadow Preserve.
All right, thank you. Any board comment?
So just to clarify, we're going to pay invoices, not give them $45,000. $45,000, let them go spend it the way they choose.
Correct. They, they provide the invoices and we reimburse. Am I wrong?
So, well, what they'll do is, at the end of the year, they'll send us a bill that they spent $89,500 and we'll give them a half.
With support.
So this is, yes, this is just an approval, letting the board know that they're asking for half of the $90,000, so we're asking for approval of 45. We won't pay anything until probably December, when they give us proof that they spent this much money, and then we'll give them that. By that, so that way, we get the approval now, so that I have it, not wait till December. So that's all.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Any other board comment? Public comment? Are you none? All those in favor? Uh, go ahead.
I'll share it with the Open Space Committee, because that was one of the questions they had during the Open Space Meeting, was why aren't they asked first to get, pay this bill? And I said, well, the Board of Supervisors authorized the bills, not the Open Space Committee. But I said, well, as soon as the Board of Supervisors approves this, I will get a copy of that to the Open Space Committee, so I'll send a copy of this letter to them the next day or two. They just want to know, like, that money's coming out. They know it's already approved, but they just want to be knowing that money's coming out of their account, actually.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Any other comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion authorizing the execution of a hold harmless agreement for a fence in the right-of-way located at 306 East 13th Avenue, Concha Hocken?
So moved.
Second.
Charlie?
Thank you. Um, the applicant, uh, here is installing or proposing to install a fence that would be in the right-of-way of Wells Street. Um, he's on the corner of the East 13th and Wells. Uh, the police has gone out and done a site inspection and determined that to have adequate site distance coming out of East 13th onto Wells, the fence would have to be back a minimum of 10 feet from the curb on Wells Street. Uh, the applicant has agreed to that. We have amended the hold harmless agreement to put that stipulation in, and based on that, um, we're, staff is recommending approval of the hold harmless agreement.
Thanks, Charlie. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion authorizing the, the appointment of Andrew Thomas as a new emergency management coordinator?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. McInally?
Yes, uh, when Andrew was, um, hired six months ago, um, he was hired as the fire marshal with emergency management coordinator. Uh, we held that, uh, back and provided the chief, Chief Ward, to be the emergency management coordinator until Andrew got his feet wet in here at White Marsh Township. In discussions with Andrew and the chief, it is now time to promote him to emergency management coordinator, uh, officially, so that's what we're looking to do.
Andrew, are you ready?
Yes.
Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Andrew. Do I have a motion authorizing the appointment of Craig T. McInally as a right-to-know officer?
So moved.
Second.
This is, again, an administrative move. Um, the right-to-know officer officially is the, uh, former township manager, so we're just looking to change the name from, uh, from Reg to myself.
All right.
And I know you're looking forward to this.
I love this appointment right here. It's a moment. This is one for the books here, yep.
Any other board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Do I have a motion to approve the allocation of $336.45 to Colonial Neighborhood Council collected from the annual MLK Junior Clothing Drive in 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McInally?
Yes, this is, um, a partnership with the Parker Recs Department for the Martin Luther King Clothing Drive. Uh, Colonial Neighborhood Council, uh, collected, um, clothing at their location, and the amounts that was collected came to $336.45. It is by the pound, so they collected several pounds of clothing, and that is their portion, and we're just looking to give them their portion.
That's great. I saw the picture on Facebook, and it was amazing. Great job by the township.
Many, many bags, that's awesome.
Yeah, they had a lot of bags, 600 or some crazy amount of bags.
Wow, that's great.
Any other board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion authorizing escrow release number nine for Phases One and Two at the Oaks at Lafayette Hill in the amount of $196,441.27 associated with SLD 06-04?
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
This, there are going to be two for the Oaks at Lafayette Hill because it is two separate escrows broken into, right now, we're considering Phase One and Two. The next one will be for Phase Three. This is a partial escrow release in the amount of $196,441.27, and after this release, there will be $251,322.73 remaining. Our office has inspected the work and found it to have been constructed in accordance with the plans and are recommending this release.
Thank you. Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion authorizing the final escrow release, number five, for Phase Three at the Oaks at Lafayette Hill associated with SLD number 06-04 in the amount of $73,292.46?
So moved.
Second.
Krista, again?
Again, this is for that same development, the Oaks at Lafayette Hill. Phase Three is, um, Leslie Court and then a couple other lots. Um, there are no stormwater improvements or open space on any of these lots, and, um, this work has been completed, so after this final release, there will be zero dollars left. And again, our office inspected the work and found it to have been constructed in accordance with the plans, and are recommending this release.
Thanks, Krista. Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion authorizing escrow release number nine in the amount of $147,017.70, and escrow release number 10 in the amount of $125,495 associated with SLD number 05-14 Development at 901 Washington Street?
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
These are the Townhome Development, or the Townhomes down at what is known as River Place along Washington Street and the Schuylkill River. Um, there are two because one of the requests didn't, uh, make it in time for the January meeting, um, so we're going to consider them both in one fell swoop. Um, so nine is in the amount of $147,017.70, and number 10 is in the amount of $125,495.0 after which there would be remaining in escrow $779,481.81. And again, our office has inspected the work and found the improvements to have been constructed in accordance with the plans, and we are recommending this release, these releases.
Thanks, Krista. Any board comment?
Krista.
Go ahead. I just wanted to know what the status of the work is down there.
It's moving along. The, the road is, um, I mean, it looks like a road in front of the property.
Wow.
And, um, there's some stick construction starting to go up, foundations, utilities, so it's really starting to look like something.
So foundations and utilities are all done?
Mostly, I would say 90%. Yeah, the water's all in, the hydrant's in, so now we can start putting combustible materials in the ground.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $1,416,340.46, payroll totaling $672,681.71, and pension plan costs totaling $3,430.78 for December 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $1,111,954.44, payroll totaling $644,504.12, and pension paid costs totaling $3,662.05 for January 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any board comment?
No, that's right.
Public comment, period? One thing I will say is, Mr. McInally, you had one typo.
I know.
I was on point, I caught it, we're good.
You stumbled a little bit on the, the dollar side.
Correct. Because I was going to call you out at that moment, but decided to keep it.
I apologize, but since there's no one on Zoom and no one in the audience, I think that was good.
So when we get more of an audience, you will be called out.
Not no one. There's not no one.
There's people, staff, staff. All right. Enough.
And for the record, I'm highly offended that you called me Mr. McInally.
There's, there's not a variety in the alphabet at this point, it's just M and T's.
I'd like to announce we had executive meeting before this meeting tonight discussing personnel. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, White Marsh.